Just about on time. Uh, we've got the full, we've got the full board here. Shall we get going?
Yeah, I'm gonna make you co-host.
Wow, that's the best thing that's happened to me all day. Tells you all about my day. Alright. Let me start off by apologizing to everyone for, for the scheduling tonight. Um, there might be other things that people might. Plan for that as well as I could have, but.
As I said.
We'll have to move along as best we can.
It starts at eight twenty.
We might not be done by then, but we'll see. Um, okay. Uh, just to recap, this is the Sherburne zoning board of appeals. Our topic tonight is the Coolidge Crossing project up on Coolidge Street. Um, this is the continued hearing. Um, last time we talked a little bit about site control, which was, which was easy for this particular group. And they gave us their initial presentation on the project. Um, and then since in between, we had the site walk with a number of people attending um, on the board and others. And I believe that our own Gino Carlucci has been hard at work on peer review. So unless the development team wants to go somewhere else, I would suggest that maybe Gino tell us where we are on peer review. Would that be acceptable to the development team?
That's fine.
I'm seeing nodding heads, so I'm gonna take that as.
Yes, yeah, we discussed, we received copies of both peer reviews and we've discussed those today with Gino.
Okay. You know, tell us.
Yeah, so I sent an RFQ out to three firms, which were Beta, PSC, and Tetra Tech. We did not get a response from Beta. We did get a response from PSC and Tetra Tech. And I, um, I wrote a short summary of the proposals, sent them out to you and to the developer. And, um, I'm familiar with both firms and I've, I'm familiar with them by having worked in other towns where they were peer reviewers for projects.
Excuse me for just a second. There's somebody who wasn't on mute and they're, we're hearing a TV in the background. Uh, I think that might be Aaron Caddick. See if I can move him. Did that help? Yeah, okay, it was him.
Much better.
Go ahead, Gino, sorry.
That's okay. So, um, so I was saying that I have worked with both firms before in other towns where they were peer reviewers on, on large projects. But I would feel comfortable with either one. Um, I did discuss the proposals as Royce just mentioned, uh, earlier today. Their preferences for Tetra Tech because they're a larger firm with the resources in-house and they can address whatever comes up. And, um, they have experience with them before. PSC is a much smaller firm, very local in Foxborough. And, um, um, while I think they're just as capable, um, uh, either, either one would be acceptable. And they lean toward Tetra Tech and I would have no problem with that.
Okay, and, um, refresh my recollection, but I think PSC helped us out maybe on, uh, fifty-nine North Main Street. And, uh, and, and Beta, who isn't in this round, helped us out at, um, the fields.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, and what's the scope, uh, that Tetra Tech will be peer reviewing?
Uh, well, it's, it's a pretty standard scope. You know, they, they'll look at traffic, site layout, all the civic, uh, civic engineering, civil engineering issues, wetlands delineation and wetland impacts. Um, and then all, all the site details. Now stormwater management, of course, that's.
Stormwater.
One, huge one.
Okay, um, and to the extent, well, I guess stormwater is really gonna be the only uh, the wet, wet area, some stormwater and wetlands will be the only wet area problems here. Uh, if they had a onsite septic system or a wastewater treatment plant or wells, we'd obviously have to hear about that too and have it peer reviewed. But I imagine, and I'm looking at the development team as I'm saying this, the answer on water and sewer is, um, we, we're going with public or there won't, this project won't happen. Um, is that a fair, fair statement?
Well, I can tell you, we're working very closely with Polte with the town of Framingham, city of Framingham, the town of Natick with the sewer and water, water in Framingham sewer in Natick. We're now also working with DEP and MWRA. So we're in full, full bore swing on all fronts.
We, and we have a, a meeting set up on the fourteenth with Framingham, just to get an update and, uh, do you make further progress on the water? Uh, the sewer, I think is pretty much, uh, we're, we're in agreement with Natick. It's just we need to get all the paperwork done.
Okay, and Ken, uh, you know, you, you can certainly not answer these questions if they're not appropriate, but, uh, my speculation as a real estate person myself is that probably your water and sewer depends on the Polte project. And that if their project doesn't go, you're, you're not gonna get the water and sewer. Is that fair speculation or unfair speculation or do?
Yeah, I think, I think they're. I think they're hand in hand.
I would make the assumption that they're gonna go hand in hand.
Right. That would, that would make sense.
Again, they have every intent of moving forward with this as well.
Okay, and obviously you can't predict anything with certainty. You've got a couple of different towns and another developer and a whole lot of things to coordinate. But final resolution on water and sewer is probably weeks to months away.
It'll, it'll be later sometime this coming year.
Okay, fine, fair, fair, asked and answered, fair enough. Okay, um, Gino, that was a little bit of a sidetrack. Uh, so is your proposal, do you have a proposal to make to us on peer reviewers?
Um, well, as I said, I'm, I'm comfortable with both. Uh, the developer is more comfortable with Tetra Tech because they're, they're a larger firm with in-house resources. And that seems fair to me. So I would be comfortable recommending Tetra Tech. I, I have worked with them for many years over in Medway, uh, and I've seen their work. They, they do excellent work. Uh, they're responsive. Um, so, um, I, I would go along with that recommendation.
And, um, looking at the other board members and the other, other town, uh, parties who are on the call, do other people have commentary for or against Tetra Tech or, or PSC? Those are our two bidders that are in front of us right now.
Uh, I have a slight preference for Tetra Tech. I noticed that they had one small task that, uh, PSC didn't have, which was to review the, you know, the, uh, water and wastewater connections to the adjacent towns. That was, uh, task one D.
Okay, well, that certainly sounds important. Um, and, and another, another plus in their column. Uh, anyone else? Comments on Tetra Tech versus PSC and the peer review process? I don't see anyone. Do you need, do you see any hands or anything like that? I don't. Actions. I don't see anybody on the chat. Oh, we got one, yes, sorry. John Thompson. Oops, there you go. Nope, you're muted again. There you go.
Um, I have a question whether, um, the scope of the peer review would include the impact of blasting for a hundred and eighty-seven units on the general chemical plume? Um, and the manganese issue generally that's been affecting, um, various parts of Sherburne?
That's not part of the scope. I know blasting is permitted through the fire department. And there are, there, I'm not all that familiar with the details, but I know there are state regulations on how that all, all gets done. And there's surveys done of all the abutting properties pre-blasting to ensure that any, any impacts that, uh, happened from the blasting are documented.
I'm just curious, uh, why wouldn't that be part of the peer review?
It does make some sense to me as I'm listening to our Gino. I mean, when, it's sort of an emerging area. And while this, a project itself isn't using well water, um, there have been a lot of situations in Connecticut where blasting on site A, but the manganese showing up in the groundwater on site B, C, and D. And I'm not enough of a geo, uh, geologist or chemist to understand, but it, but it has been happening and it would be worth, would be worth taking a look at. I, I assume, as Val, you might assume there's some blasting that will have to be done.
Well, that's the question I have. Is there blasting anticipated?
It could be. Yeah, I, I don't think we have a final determination if there will be blasting or not at this point.
I don't see any major blasting. If there could be some blasting for trenches, those things such as that.
Right, you have that, one big ledge in the middle of building two, so.
Well, luckily there's no basements to these buildings. We're not going down, we're going up.
Yeah.
Um, there were no basements on a hundred and eighty-seven units, not one basement?
Well, I'm talking about the hundred and twenty units.
Right, that is right.
I thought.
Up on the hill, I believe, is mostly gravel from what I could see.
Right. These, these folks are only responsible for their project. Certainly the issue of what happens in the construction of the other project. Uh, Marion, I think the, isn't the planning board the central, uh, permit issuing board to the other project?
Uh, I, I do believe so. Gino can correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, this is a special permit from the planning board.
Right.
Right, so, so the blasting on this, on this project, I think this, this board should, should own and, and work with the development team and the peer reviewer to see how much of a problem it is, if at all. Um, and, and with the, with respect to the other project, I'll respectfully ask Marion's board to look into it at that time. All right, good, good question. Um, other, other questions or comments, um, on the peer reviewer? Then once. Or twice. Look at the other screens. Gene, I don't see anybody. Do you? Okay, uh, board members, um, you wanna consider a motion to, uh, to accept Tetra Tech? And direct, uh, Gino to work out a, an escrow arrangement with the development team, uh, so that they can be paid? And that the, the one change to their, um, scope of work be that we ask them to, uh, look into, uh, any manganese effects from blasting as well. If they need to adjust their scope of payment to cover that, Gino, uh, we'd wanna see a supplemental letter from them. Uh, in, I'm hoping that would be a very small scope of work for them.
Frank, are you on mute?
I don't know.
Other board members, how do you feel about this?
I, you could, you could just identify it as a possible additional service, since we have no idea what the scope would be at this point. I don't know how they would put a number to it.
Okay.
Well, their proposal to begin with is based on time and expenses, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's a rough estimate of a total amount in order to establish an escrow account, as, as Rick has mentioned. And then whatever work they have to do, they would, they would, uh, charge that based on how much time it takes. And they, they do have the resources, so they could, um, I'm sure they can handle the, uh, the blasting review if that becomes necessary.
Okay. Um, Jonathan, where are you? You're on mute.
Where is he?
Here I am. Uh, I would support that motion as modified by Ron's comments.
All right, so let me try to, um, let me try to rephrase it as a motion. You two can throw rocks at it. I move that the, uh, the board, um, uh, direct the town planner to engage Tetra Tech pursuant to their proposal. Um, and that he further be directed to work out an exploration with the developers that the money's, uh, in hand to be able to pay them. Um, and that in their, uh, in, in the documents with Tetra Tech, that the town planner note a possible additional scope of work uh, to be determined as to whether or not blasting and manganese effects in groundwater, um, should be included. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, further vigorous discussion, friendly additions, outright hostile additions, anything? Okay, going once, going twice, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? None? Jeanne carries three to nothing.
Roll, roll call vote.
Just a reminder.
They're going forward with.
Was someone asking for a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay, well, fine, uh, we, we can do that. Uh, Rick Novak votes yes.
Ron Steffick votes yes.
Jonathan Fitch votes yes.
Okay. Roll call voted yes. Um, all right. Uh, development team, where would you like to go next?
Uh, we, we have a presentation we'd like to go over with you. And as I go through this, if you have any reason or questions, don't hesitate to stop me. We can pick up where I am, then we can continue on. I'm gonna give you a brief overview of what we did last time. Uh, some of our team members are here, our architects here, civil design group members here, and, uh, we can go over a number of items.
Thank you. And, and Roy, I assume your invitation to chime in with, with constructive questions applies to everybody on the call and not just the board members.
That's purely up to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I would like to open it up to everyone, because we do, we do actually believe in public involvement and think, you know, so long as it's constructive and on point.
That's.
I, 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 I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay. And, um, you know, we, we did see a, uh, letter from the, a comment letter from the planning board that, um, we, let me see this right one. That we, we can, uh, refer to some of the comments of that, that we can discuss as we go through this.
So some of the, uh, images we're showing you, you've seen before, but I thought it'd be good to have a little refresher. And then we'll get into some other matters. So this plan you've seen before, this plan delineates the property lines in yellow. The blue are the borders of the wetlands. And of course, you'll see up front, we have a clubhouse. And then we have three buildings dispersed along the site with numerous garage buildings. Now you'll notice the buildings, I'm.
Well, we have this plan later on. This is just the introductory slide.
I'm sorry, say it again?
This plans later. This is just the introductory.
Okay, so you don't want to get into detail?
Not yet.
Uh, here you have the development team. Again, we've discussed this before, the A Stone team, our architect, uh, Rob is here this evening. Civil Design Group will discuss some of the drainage issues. Uh, Stephanie is with us this evening from Legal. And we have Hawk Design Traffic Consultant Bob is with us this evening and our wetlands consultant, Dr. Shering Wang. Next, please. Again, summary of a breakdown again for those who weren't with us last time. We're proposing doing a hundred and twenty rental units in three buildings and approximately a fifteen acre site with a clubhouse building. We also have some outbuildings for garages. The design of the buildings in keeping with what we feel is a feeling we have in Sherburne. We call it a modern farmhouse style. It's got some roofscapes similar to a farmhouse. And the architecture and the fenestration is broken down to break down the mass a bit. We have forty-two one-bedroom units, sixty-six two-bedroom units and twelve three-bedroom units. Our average sizes for one bedrooms are about seven hundred and ninety square feet. Two-bedroom units about eleven hundred square feet and the three bedrooms are about thirteen hundred and forty-seven square feet. All the building, all the residential buildings will have elevators and there'll be two stairwells as well. All units, which is unique to this type of product, will all have balconies. We have a hundred and seventy parking spaces with an additional thirty garage spaces for a total of two hundred parking spaces. A ratio of about one point six seven per unit. We also have enclosed trash areas. And I should also mention, which is not on top, we could stop there for one minute. I also wanna mention that we do have, uh, bicycle storage locations, bike racks at the various buildings as well. Next, Todd. This you've seen, this again is a locust map, just to give us a sense of where Coolidge Street is and where the property is relative to Sherburne, Natick, and Framingham. Again, this is a logical blow up of the site on, you can see on Coolidge Street. It parallels the power lines and goes back towards the Polte site in the rear. Again, this is another overview. And I think at this point here, I'd like to turn it over to Phil from the Civil Design Group, who can give us a little discussion about some of the site, uh, design, drainage, et cetera. Phil.
Uh, could everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. Uh, I guess what I'd like to do tonight is again, just give you a brief overview, tell you about what you're looking at. And also, uh, touch upon how, how we came up with the layout from both a horizontal perspective and, and a vertical, a vertical perspective. So, um, as Roy had alluded to, the site is about fifteen acres. And as you could see, um, on the parcel, there is three, uh, three residential units, uh, or three residential, three residential structures housing a hundred and twenty units with one access point at the, at the lower section of your screen. If you could, Todd, if you can move the arrow down to the Coolidge Street access, yep.
Right here, sorry.
So as you, as you enter the site, the clubhouse is on your right, uh, with, with, with some outdoor amenities. And then as you travel further east or back towards the site, you'll pass building one, two, and three with supplemental surface spaces. Um, and then as you, uh, there, there is, there is one, um, full access, but there is also an emergency access all the way to the north section of site that connects into the, uh, future development further to the east. Uh, and that will be an emergency access, uh, for, for, um, privacy emergencies or, or somebody needs to get out via secondary access. Um, there will be the option to, to, to make a U-turn, uh, if you wanted to come back out of that site uh, within the, 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 the lot that is just north of building three. Uh, if you could, Todd, if you can move just right there, there is an act, there is an opportunity to, to make a U-turn. So, uh, there will be full access throughout the site. Um, in terms of, um, when we looked at the layout of the site, we, we looked at this site, uh, as we do every, every site. We, we identified the, the horizontal and the vertical constraints of the site, the horizontal sites being the lot lines. And in this case, uh, the wetland areas. So the wetland areas are highlighted in blue. And, uh, as we laid this out, we wanted to make sure we obviously avoided those resource areas to the maximum extent that we could. Uh, and, and we believe we achieved that. There are no, uh, impervious areas within fifty feet of, 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 uh, of a resource area. There, there is some stormwater within the fifty feet and grading within the fifty feet. But all the hardscape has been, um, has been omitted or, or left out of that fifty-foot area, uh, between all resource areas. So as you could see, uh, as building two is really where the, the two wetland systems encroach the most. Um, and that, and that's what drove the, the lot design, the structure design. Um, and that's why there's no spaces directly opposite of building two right in that area, because the, of that, of that wetland finger that stretches out. So, so we think, you know, we were sensitive to, to not only, um, the, obviously the lot lines, but also the resource areas. In terms of its, in terms of the verticality constraints, as you move back towards the site, there, uh, there is a, a steep slope toward, towards the rear. So we wanted to eliminate any, any development right up to that lot line. Um, and then also, uh, there is shallow groundwater. Uh, so, so this site will be lifted up on average of anywhere between three or four feet in, in, in certain places. So, um, you know, that, that's the general overview. I'm happy to get into any more specifics, but, uh, that's, that's how we, when we, that's how we first visually, uh, you, you looked at this site and see how it was gonna lay out horizontally and vertically.
I'll just also mention, there are two connections, um, for that will be traversable for residents that connect to the Polte project. This fire access, uh, drive is gravel drive here will be an access point. And then we are gonna have a kind of a natural nature trail we're proposing to connect. Uh, and that's, and it has to be a, a nature trail, because it's such a steep kind of climb in the grade. We, we're doing best we can to get up there. As I think, as the site walk last week, you saw that kind of steep hill in the back with that kind of, uh, hunting, uh, lodges up in the tree. And that's where that, that area is.
And that'll connect to a trail system that Polte is doing as well.
Up to Peters Hill. This is just black and white of what you saw. I don't, do I add anything about this?
And, and there's also, there's also, um, sidewalks as well connecting, uh, throughout the property as well, along with the trail system.
Todd, if we get, okay, this is the aerial rendering. At this point, I'd like to ask Rob Schaefer, our architect, to comment on the architecture. Rob.
Good evening. Um, so rendering we had from before that shows the clubhouse towards the front as a low-scale building, softening the front entry area to a more residential scale than working to the three-story building behind it. Um, then the next building between the, the three with the third at the back being screened by the trees and from the street scape. Um, as you could see, the buildings are fairly similar in height to the forest around it or trees around it. So that fits in with the, uh, context of the area that we are building in. The, um, we did leave some of the trees up front that are represented there in front of the clubhouse to carry some of the screening, which you'll see in some later pictures. Things to point out at the, uh, sidewalks that run throughout the site are visible here that people can have a nice walk to the clubhouse from the back building all the way to the front, and then each of the front buildings are adjacent to it. Uh, then you have the back gathering area behind the clubhouse with the grill and fire pit pool and a lawn area for lawn activities. Uh, if we can move to the next one, please. So this is a angled view of the first building behind the clubhouse, the clubhouse being there on the right. Something occurred to me after reading the planning board's letter that, um, when we first did this rendering, we didn't include the people into it, um, in the hurry to get it done. So this time I added some people to it to represent what may have been lost on the free, first presentation is providing what I would call a farmer's, farmer's porch at the entry areas, which you can see pretty much in the middle of the image, and added some people there gathering and some benches. That was the intention as a gathering area, a waiting area for those that live can sit on their front porch and enjoy the, uh, environment around them or meet up with some neighbors that may be passing by as they go in the clubhouse for the car and such. But it extends over three, three bays from the entrance. And we'll have three benches in there, which you'll see again in the later one. Uh, this is a good representation of the farmer's, I'm, I'm sorry, the modern farmhouse style with the gables, the shed roof, uh, a couple hips mixed in. It'll break up the elevation into smaller pieces representing what may appear to be a, a neighborhood. And, um, for individual houses and those that live in this can, can look at it and pick a piece of it and feel that that's where they live, is that portion of the building. And then that's carried down to the entrance with the gable helping to signify the entry point as well. Uh, then if we can move to the next one, here's a floor plan with the entrance here in the left. Well, we'll blow up of that in a minute, but, uh, you can see all the units layout with the double o to corridor and the stairs at the end, each having the entrance area. Uh, the mailroom will be off the, off the entrance. Each building has their own mailroom with a package shelving, um, which is showing up here. So there, we see the mailroom, the package area, elevator lobby for those going up to the elevator or continue in to the stair and onto the first floor. Very, it's where you can see the benches and the front porch is a healthy-sized porch for everyone to make use of. It can have more to it as we, after we get it done and, and maybe some other features to it. But that's what I have there for now to represent the gathering area and possible social interaction that would occur there. Next is the elevation, better sense of the mix of roof lines and caps to the deck towers. You can show the balconies that already each unit that. caps to the deck towers. You can show the balconies that already each unit that Roy had mentioned. And then some of the materials would be a stone base with the clapboards in mid-area carried up in the entry areas, and then the board and baton represented to give a mix of materials to break down the scale of the building and soften the overall approach of the building. And this is the elevations of clubhouse, working with that same architecture with a little more elevation to it, giving higher ceilings, more open ceiling areas to help give shape and definition to them. So on the right, on the upper one is a gathering area for like a sports bar and kitchen area. Yeah. And that would be a living area with the vaulted ceiling on the left is the fitness area. And then what would be on the outside, which I took off. So, because we've gotten a little confusing would be the pergola on the right for the fire pits and on the left would be a outdoor TV area for the residents to enjoy entertainment outside. I think we can go to the next. Here's a street view, a little bit to the right of the main entrance to the site that was requested. So this is existing condition. And then the next one shows what it would look like. Again, the trees are representational. We tried to use what we could, but some things we had to replicate, but.
Rob, I mean, the original landscape plan did not show these trees or plantings in front of this garage area. We have added these and will, that will be reflected in the landscape plan in the future.
So the, that was, I think, in response to the planning board letter as well. So get on the left is a clubhouse, lower scale. You can see where the pergola would be and the grill and fire pit area. And then on the right, it's the garage helping the screen as well, the building behind. So you can see a nice transition from the front at the streetscape to the clubhouse to the building. And then the trees beyond are still above the, the roof line of the building. Let's try the other one. So this is the view of the existing house that will be taken down. And the trees in the back would be where the clubhouse is, but the ones in the front, we can maintain a good portion of them to help screen it some more. And this is a sidewalk up to the, where the bus stop would be. And on the left would be the sign entry and the drive just beyond it.
Yep. Can you, can you just say a few words about the size of the balconies? You probably didn't see it, but in the chats, it popped up as a question from one of the residents.
Sure. Well, I did happen to see that. I was going to catch that just as you asked me. So that's great.
Whatever.
Perfect timing. But yeah, the decks are six by 10. So the, on the right, I'm, I'm sorry, on the side of them is a mechanical closet with the heating and cooling system as well as the hot water heater is in there. And then next to that would be the six by 10 deck and the mechanical closet as a dual purpose. It serves as the mechanical space, but also offers a little bit of screening to give some sense of privacy and try to orient these with certain aspects of view in mind so that the ones at the end are screened from the entry areas. So don't feel like the traffic's constantly looking at them, going in and out of the building. And then the ones in the back, try to use them to screen one way or the other so that they get their own view and don't feel that their neighbor has, is necessarily looking straight over at them. But it seemed to work out very well. It's a good size, comfortable for a couple of chairs and a table. And we found it to work quite well for the residents. Yep. I think that was it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I'd like to next introduce Bob, who's going to give us some thoughts on the.
Dan is on tonight.
This is Dan Dumas with MDM. You saw Bob meet you off my office. I'm a senior project manager on this project, working directly with Bob. I'm going to quickly go over a plan that you've seen before on the site distance. So looking towards the north arrow on this plan, which is ideal 390, that's looking towards Spine Street. Just to orientate you, we have adequate sightlines for the 85th percentile speeds that we measured out there as well as the ideal, which is based on operations and ease of use of the driveway. We also meet that higher criteria for the posted speed limit in both directions. As you can see towards the middle of the plan, the sightline looking, I'm going to call it to the southeast. That area there is adequately clear of the bus stop area and the retaining wall next to the eastern side with the, that lower parking lot areas there. So that's, that's clear. The project team is also working with the regional transit authority and creating a bus stop at this location. As part of that, we're looking at the design so that the bus will be able to come down, turn into an area to turn around and head back north towards us, back towards Spine Street. We've talked with the local school system and the busing system. They prefer to have their bus not turn into any turnoff area and stop on the street itself. Use their flashing lights because they're worried that people would try to bypass the bus for safety when children are loading. So they're, they're going to continue to load to and from the street where the Metro West Regional Transit would turn in, turn around, and then head back to the north. We're currently looking at that design. The school children could use the bus shelter for waiting, but again, they would load from the street. So that, that's basically all we have. I'll turn it back to Roy to, I think, close things out.
I will mention, we did have a conversation via Zoom with the MWR TA this morning. And that's where they gave us the input about providing a turnaround because it's, they would come in from Spine Street to our site, stop and then return back down Coolidge to Spine Street. So they're looking at for something a little bit different than we proposed here. So we're taking a look at that right now and should have some better ideas in the future.
I, I have a couple of questions on the sightlines.
Sure.
Uh, the one toward Main Street, what, what is that heavy line at the, around the parking there?
I believe that's a retaining wall for the, the whole of the parking area behind the building. And so they can grade down towards the street to provide the low area for the site distance. So you can see in the lower part of profile.
Is the parking above or below the street?
It's above.
It's above.
Parking is above?
It is a retaining wall and this parking, parking is above.
Okay. And then it looks like, you know, when we were on the site last Friday, it looked like there were a number of trees there that will obstruct the view that you've indicated there.
There, there are a couple of trees that were most likely have to come down. There was a large dead oak that was right around here. That would probably need to come down no matter what, because it is a large dead tree. The pine that's here that.
What about the drop off shelters? Is that in the lineup site?
That, that, that is set just off, though that will be moved now anyways, we're redesigning the bus stop area.
So you're going to, you're going to adjust it to miss that then?
Yes. You brought up a very good point, and that is we're going to have to adjust the location of the trees based on the sightline. So there are some trees going to be coming down. We're going to replicate them with new trees. And those new trees will have to be behind the sightline.
Okay.
So any, just to be clear, anything between where it's shown is that dashed blue line and the curb line of the street. Anything in between there will be held at two feet or less above the adjacent street grade to provide the sightlines.
There, there's hope that when we were talking in this, in the sidewalk, that we might be able to maintain one or two of those taller trees that the trunks are pretty narrow because there's no branches on the lower levels. So we'll still look at trying to save any tree we can in that, in that respect.
The two. In that respect, you just clear anything out hopefully below about seven feet.
Yeah. The two trees that are causing the most obstruction of a very damaged white pine that we're going to have to take down. And there's a probably a 36 to 40 inch caliber oak tree that's dead. So that's going to need to come down as well.
I'd like to say it's the only dead oak tree in Sherburne, but that would not be correct. One of the things I noticed on these, these site, on these sightlines on the sidewalk, looks like there was a telephone pole in the way. Is that going to be in the way? Can you relocate that?
No, we're actually on the opposite side of a pole.
It's actually, yeah, the telephone pole will be right about where this, this hand is. So on the screen, it's just outside of the driveway.
So it's in the sightline or not?
No, because you'd be stopping behind it. That's right on the.
Got it. I see it. It's, it's further out towards the street.
Yeah. It knows would be in the street if it was blocking you.
And generally the utility poles, unless you have a bunch of them in a row, you can usually see around them. But you'd want to maintain the vegetation and trees around them. So it didn't make a wall type of effect.
Got it. Thank you.
So that's generally our presentation for this evening or open to any questions you may have or comments.
Can you, can you put the site, sightlines back up? And let me ask the, the assembled, the assembled group. Does anyone else, I mean, there are 33 people on the call. This is, this is an issue, a design issue. I think they're trying to work with us on it. But if you've got questions about how the sightlines work, now's a great time to raise them. Anybody? Okay. Well, it'll, it'll, it'll come up in the peer review too, but, but thank you. All right. Since they've finished their presentation for the evening, it's Patriots game isn't on for another 40 minutes. So.
So. Or need time to drive home.
Right, exactly. You need to, you need to walk out of your office. Is, is there anyone who's got other questions for the, the development team before we get to peer review? Or, or questions about the project? Planning board weighed in with a very helpful comment letter. Marian, you and your board can, can weigh in as to whether or not you think these changes were responsive to what you were concerned about or not. But now is the time for, it's not quite speak now for our older piece, but we're getting close. So who's got something to say? Wetlands, sightlines, anything? Okay. John, John, John Thompson first, and then, then Michael Lesser.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay. Now, my, my question is access and egress for all construction equipment, trucks, et cetera, will be strictly from the Coolidge, from Coolidge Street. Is that correct? That's, that was our understanding, which.
Yeah. For our project, yes.
Yeah.
I, I have one other question. I'm sorry, Michael. I don't have children in the school system, but I do pay taxes, I guess. And I'm, I'm just curious, I know, I think it's pretty safe to say that people move to Sherburne for the school system. And I think there's a count of 66 two-bedroom and 12 three-bedrooms. So if there was worst case, a child per bedroom, it's 90 kids.
That never happens.
No, I appreciate that. And my question is, I view this like a chess game, right? This is to solve one problem for Sherburne, the 40B problem. But the sort of the problem, the underlying, if I understand it right, idea of 40B is to give people the ability to give their children a leg up by perhaps attending a better school system, safer neighborhood and that kind of thing. So it seems like Sherburne would be very attractive in that way for renters. And so as a chess game, what is the planning for what could be quite a big influx of children to Pine Hill or whatever?
All right. That, that's a fair question. Let me respond to it, please, development team. Unfortunately, inherent in the way 40B works, we're not allowed to consider that. There, there are handcuffs on the board in terms of things we can turn down a project or condition a project on and saying, you're going to bring too many children into the schools. Or we're going to have to build another school is, is, is outside what we're allowed to talk about. And, and it may not be fair and it may not be good policy. It is the way the statute's written, unfortunately. And, you know, regardless of the personal feelings of the members of the board about the wisdom of 40B or lack thereof, we're, we're obligated to, to administer it the way it's written. So unfortunately, you are correct. It is a little bit of a chess game because if you build these units, there will be more, there will be more kids in the schools and that'll have to be a, a tax burden to the town. There will be also revenue from these buildings, tax revenue. But as has often been pointed out in, in many forms, the, the cost of the schoolchildren is often higher than the revenue payback. And that is a, a burden that 40B imposes on towns, right or wrong, fair or not fair, it's there. Definitely keeper. I'm looking at you. See, did I get any of that wrong?
No, you, you, you got that correct. The only piece I guess I would add on to that is in fact, 40B requires a developer to have 10% at three bedrooms. So a developer is obligated to commit that 10% of the total project would be sized three bedrooms. And so, and what we've done here is we kept it just at that requirement level. So there are 12 three bedrooms. Yes. And I think the other kind of the, the, the policy point if one's looking for it, I think behind 40B and the inability to look at schools is because they don't want there to be discrimination based on families. I think that's where you get that. So, but, but you are correct, Mr. Chairman. That is the law, 40B, as you will.
But how would, how will, is Pine Hill, again, I don't have children in Pine Hill, but to anymore. To, is there enough room there to absorb this?
Unfortunately, 40B's answer is the state doesn't care.
But, but I'm not, but I'm talking to the town of Sherburne.
Oh, I do, do it. No, I don't know. And I don't know what this school committee is. I, I'm frankly not allowed to ask. You could certainly go to the school committee at one of their public meetings and ask them that. It's a perfectly reasonable question. But, but this board in, in these hearings can't be essentially asking that question because by statute, it's irrelevant to us. It's the town's problem by statute.
Thank you.
Sorry. My turn. I say the development team doesn't have to.
I will say though, the number of children tend to be a lot lower in rental apartments than for self housing.
Right.
There, there are a couple of chats in the group chat.
Okay. Michelle Ryan, who was asking about a future project at the back of the property, comment further. Todd or Roy, you can answer that one. I think that may be a misunderstanding that it's only the Pulte project that's behind you, right?
Correct. That's the Pulte Homes is doing the age restricted project that was voted on town meeting a number of years ago. And that's for 55 and over. There's no other projects on back of our site or, or there is just those two projects.
And then there's another question. I know, Michael Lesser, you're next in line.
Okay. No problem.
Julia Gack had asked, what's the rental price on the each one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? And what's the income cap to rent?
Well, you've got two categories. You get the affordable units where, which is obviously less money. I can tell you the market rate units range for one bedrooms. And you can correct me if I go astray, Todd. I think the one bedroom is somewhere between 16 and 1900. Two bedrooms are 23 to 2800. And the three bedrooms could be 3,000 or more, depending on the layout.
I think that you're high on the three bedrooms, but the, the generally that's what we put in our application. That's what we intend, but market dictates what they're going to be at the end of the day.
Now, the affordable obviously is significantly less than this. Those guidelines by the state.
That's set on a formula based on area median income.
Yep.
Can you, can you sort of, I know you can't do it exactly, but can you sort of rough cut where you think the, you guys are in this business, you do it a lot. Where, where you think the one, two and three bedrooms are likely to come out?
For the market rate?
No, for the, for the, for the affordable rates.
Oh, they gotta be what? 35, 40% less, Todd?
The, the, there's actually a state, I have them in our application. I could pull them up, but off the top of my head, I want to say the one bedrooms were like 11 or 1200, the twos were, oh geez.
Best order magnitude?
1600, I'm guessing. I, I, I'm trying to pull into the threes were about 1800. Again, this is also, by the state, it was in our application. I still have it off the top of my head. So that's my guest, guestimation.
It may change with the year.
Right. Fair enough. Thank you very much. Michael Lesser.
Hi, this is the right volume. I have two things for update. I have sort of three things with different hats. One is, I was just curious whether I missed the beginning of the meeting where there was an update on how it's going with Nate. I was just curious whether I missed the beginning of the meeting, whether there was an update on how it's going with Natick and Framingham on utilities, um. Uh, I'll, whether I missed that or not, then you can tell me that was already done, I'll find out from somebody else.
Uh, we, I'll give you a very brief, so, there's a, there's a meeting coming up in a few days with Framingham to move the water agreement along. And Natick is progressing, there's also discussions going on with Pulte, with D E P and M W R A on those issues as well.
Okay, I guess we'll hear next time.
They're, they're progressing well, but it is a, a, a process.
Yeah, it's a process, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be months, not weeks.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's another part of that, was I was asking you the timeframe for any of that, um. The second of, and I'll have another third, is, uh, uh, for the, uh, filing, uh, for the Conservation Commission on Wetlands, is there some, sort of, uh, update on when that might be something you're doing, or you're putting that off depending on the other stuff?
No, I think, I think. I think, uh, we'd like to do that probably sometime after the first of the year.
I'll say, so we wanted to have our first couple of meetings, and here are some feedback, and, uh, I think after this meeting, we're gonna try to finish off our stormwater designs, and we'd like to have that completed, uh, and fully designed before we go to CONCOM. So, um, that should take about, oh, four to six weeks to finish. And then, you know, we could probably move forward and filing a application with your board.
Okay, um, and related to that on the stormwater, I don't, I, I missed, I guess I don't know whether the scope will work for the, uh, peer review for the Z B A. I missed seeing what that scope was, whether that included reviewing stormwater stuff, or that'll just be done on the peer review.
No, it, it is.
Okay, so that. So the peer review that we might do on the wetlands will be more limited then, okay, so as long as, uh, that's good to just know for when we, uh, deal with the N O I, um.
Well, the Z B A, with the Z B A and the CONCOM share the same peer reviewers, I hope.
Uh, well, that was a, uh, that's an issue that I don't think in the end got to, uh, I don't know whether the, did the COMCOM ever write a letter to you, the Z B A?
I don't think we've gotten a letter on this one yet, um, we voted earlier in the meeting to, um, uh, to hire Tetra Tech, they had, they seemed to have the best proposal and, and were, uh, acceptable to the, um, uh, to the development team. Obviously, if there's a letter coming from CONSCOM, I know several of your members attended the, uh, the site walk, thank you for doing that. Your subject matter expertise is welcome, um, and if you've, if you've got comments, uh, we want them out on the table.
Right, well, it's always tricky problem of, of until we get an N O I, it's hard to, it, we're in a sense supposed to just review what comes before us, that's why, and maybe there'll be ways to try to coordinate in terms of either adding on to the, uh, to the peer, to, uh, Tetra Tech or something, but we basically, I don't think that we participated in that scope of work beyond the fact that I, the stormwater is there. But we can revisit that once the N O I is filed, filed.
Wetlands impact is part of the scope as well.
What's that?
Wetlands, review of wetland impacts is part of the scope as well.
Okay, I guess, right, I wasn't party to whatever was going on. I mean, I'm part of the commission, but I wasn't party, not party to all of it, I have enough, uh, things to do, um. So, uh, well, we'll see how that goes when the N O I is filed and how that all fits together, um. The, uh, I'll, uh, and since that's happening soon, we'll figure that out, um. I wanted to step into the other area, putting on, I mean, I'm on the energy committee, uh, but I'm not speaking necessarily for the whole committee, uh, by any means. I guess whether you guys wanted to talk about, uh, the fact that the energy code that you're building to, and you're trying to be progressive, as we've talked, basically, I've, just to say that I know that you guys, for, for other people there, that I've had conversations with, uh, with Todd, uh, and Roy, that they're, they're doing more work to look at the, uh, the efficiency of the buildings and to lessen the, uh, the footprint, carbon footprint for, uh, climate change issues, um. I don't, I'll just, and I guess in a sense, for the town, the town itself, we haven't come to, we haven't quite gotten to the point where for the town, we're trying to look at how to get to, uh, a much lower carbon footprint for the whole entire town, and meeting with the state goals of even to getting towards net zero by twenty fifty. Um, and that this is a large project in our town, and we're trying to work, we're gonna try to work with residents to lower their footprint. And this project is gonna meet the, a current code, which is, has fairly significant efficiency requirements. But there's obviously state-of-art, as we've talked about before at other times, about passive house, which maybe has half the use. Um, it's not quite net zero, um, and whether, uh, I guess whether at this point, I know you're doing some studies, which is, I appreciate that, and it's been a good dialogue. Sorry about the train that comes through, um, the, uh, um, whether you, uh, even wanna share at this point a little bit of what you're trying to study to go beyond energy code, as well as how far you might be able to go, I mean, understanding the constraints of the forty B process, but.
Yeah, we are looking, we've, uh, are working with a green engineer out of Concord, Mass. And we're taking a look at, uh, a passive house model and a, uh, all-electric model. And we're gonna do the research, uh, there, you know, basically do that whole modeling to see what we need to change, what needs to be done, and then, once that's done, to re, reach those, those hurdles. Where we talking to our general contractors and seeing the, the cost implications, once that's done, to see if it's a feasible, uh, way to go, which we're hoping it is. And we're also looking at, uh, doing solar on the roofs, we've, uh, reached out to a couple of solar companies and, uh, are actively talking with them about that.
Good, no, I mean, it's partially, I mean, I know some of that, it's partially just to bring up other people in town, to the fact that you're working on that, and hopefully it will make some real.
We're definitely spending time and energy on it, and, you know, it, it would be a good thing for the project and the community and the environment, so we are diligently looking at it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, I mean, I'm doing it here just so that people, other people know, as I said, as well as the fact that, uh, um, as that I'll, obviously, for the sake of the, uh, for the sake of whether it's regional interest or local interest, but however you wanna define it, that, uh, that minimizing the carbon footprint of this building is, is a big part of what goes on in town, given the magnitude of this building. Um, and that to the extent that things could be pushed more towards, it's not quite the sta, sort of the state of the art, but it's not quite fully normalized, the, the sort of passive house concept that, uh, that hopefully, that I will keep prodding a little bit, to see whether you can get that, get closer that way. Um, and the sort of idea of the all-electric option, so that basically, that can be then, like, if it's all-electric, then the electricity could be uh, met by a renewable energy, so that it becomes a much more, uh, sustainable project, even in the longer term, looking out beyond the first few years. Um, but whatever, I partially just bring it up, because I know we're talking about it, but uh, I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with, um, and I don't know how it figures. I know it's, whether it's a gray area or not an area, in terms of the Z B A and conditioning, to what extent the sort of, uh, sustainability or efficiency and, uh, and those kind of issues are sort of real factors that can be included in the process is something that we'll see how it goes, or I don't know if the Z B A wants to comment on whether there's a stake there.
Well, uh, I, I, uh, thank you for all of those comments, Michael, I, no. The Z B A has to function within our statutory guideline, and our statutory guideline is that we have to approve these projects, unless we wanna turn it down or condition it, and the conditions need to be based on something which outweighs in the view of hack, the, uh, regional need for housing, and almost nothing meets that standard. Um, in Sherburne, uh, groundwater protection, good wells, good, good sewer, good septic systems do meet that standard, but, um, I, I think we might have a difficult time for, forcing a, uh, a sustainable house-type condition on a project where the developer thought it wasn't, uh, um, uh, sustainable, because I think we're unlikely to get supported by hack on that, be, just because the standard's so high that we have to meet.
Oh, yeah, and I understand, I, I mean, we're basically working on a volunteer thing, uh, being a sort of a cooperative basis to see if we can move it along, and, but it's also part of pushing the process itself, that the Z B A or to what extent these kind of sustainability interests are of significant magnitude, that they should be considered when conditioning projects and things like that, that, uh, I'd like to think that it could begin to rise to that level of, uh, importance. Um, so that's why I hammer on, uh, and I'll leave it at that for now, and I look forward to, uh, how the next step goes with the stuff that, uh, that based on.
I applaud the efforts of the developer in this regard, uh, undertaken on a voluntary basis.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, it's of interest to us as well, so it's not, nothing we aren't looking into just out of our own interest as well.
Well, we, we wanna be very clear, though, because we're, we're going into this with very good intent, we're trying to understand it fully, whether it's passive house or some other form, we've got a firm right now designing a, a solar panel system, given the angles of the buildings and seeing what that entails. I think that's more of an easy hurdle, I think, depending on what comes out of the study and what the requirements ought to meet those hurdles, the next step we need to look at is what are the cost implications of that? Because at the end of the day, if we can make it work, we're happy to do it, financially, if it's a deal breaker in terms of its financeability and the feasibility, then, uh, unfortunately, we can't go there, so we don't have the answer to that, we're not gonna prejudge it.
Okay, uh, Roy and Todd, do you see the question in the, in the, in the chat about who's responsible for the wells around the houses? Need me to read that one to you? Do you wanna respond to it?
Is this for neighboring houses, I assume?
Yes, it's from Julia Gatt, and it said, uh, I'll read it, who would be responsible if private wells around houses will dry out or quality of water will not be acceptable, that was your question.
Well, I, I would say this, I think, number one, you've added a component, if we're gonna be doing any blasting, we've gotta study that. I think the other thing is, we probably wanna know what the quality of, uh, our rebutters' wells are currently. Not only gallons per minute, but the quality of the water, and I think the fact that we're not putting in a sewage treatment plant adds immeasurably to those alleviating those concerns.
And, and not, and not filling your own wells?
Yes.
Right.
Does the survey work that was talked about by Gino for the well quality before the project? Um, because of the magnesium, I guess it is, there, uh, is there gonna be testing before, so that there's some baseline that's done, was that part of what was inferred in terms of the blasting impacts, pos, measuring the, the, uh, blasting impacts?
Well, I, I will say this, when we've done blasting in the past, I think Gino mentioned it earlier. Number one, you need to get a permit from the fire department, number two, you have to do an area survey of all your butters, homes, properties, et cetera. And there also has a seismic graph on the site every time you blast. So you can't, you can't go above certain parameters in terms of the intensity of the blast, so it's all very closely monitored.
Oh, no, I was just wondering whether the part of that, I mean, I heard that part, that whether the baseline will include what the certain mineral levels are in the neighboring wells, so that they could, so that there's not the sort of, he said, she said, I mean, that's something known before.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll have to have that conversation with our engineers, I'm not sure what the protocols are for projects such as this, when you have a butters with wells, we can find that out.
Yeah.
I would certainly say to everybody on the call and everybody in town, th- this is enough of an issue, um, unrelated to this project. Having your well water tested is cheap and easy, do it, because then you'll have the baseline. It's one of, it's one of the chemicals that come back, Peggy and I just sent one in, we haven't done it in twelve years. Um, but if you have one that was done in twenty twenty, and then you have a problem in twenty twenty-one or twenty-two, you're much better off than, than, as everyone says, getting into what he said, she said, but when something happened. So it's in everybody's interest to do it, I'll climb down off my soapbox now, thank you. Um, okay, um, I don't see further questions, Genie, do you see any? Um, development team, I think at one point in one of the materials, I thought I saw you were looking for some guidance from us on your stormwater design.
Mr. Chairman, I think what we're looking for is each time we've showed you the layout of the buildings, th- this, this is frankly the only place these buildings can go. You can see very tightly with a fifty-foot setback on either side. And we wanna release our engineers to continue on doing the drainage, so we've kinda like, we're not asking for any approvals, rather, just concurrence, we understand where the buildings are.
Okay, so I'll, I'll ask the question unofficially to, uh, the planning board and, and the members of the, of, uh, of CONSCOM, who happened to be on, and anyone from Board of Health being on, um, you're not as stopped, uh, if you don't raise your hand now, but this would be an extremely polite time to, uh, to raise your hand and say if you've got any problem with how those buildings are sited. Um, because they're, they're gonna spend a fair amount of money on a more detailed design based on, uh, us not telling them, us not complaining about it tonight, is that a fair way of saying it, Roy?
That would be helpful, thank you.
Okay. Anybody? All right, well, um, it's not a guarantee, but nobody, 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 nobody.
I think the se- sense of indications were really what we needed.
Right. And, and, and certainly, a- a- as a real estate person myself, you know, you did a good job laying out these buildings, but you didn't have a lot of other choices either.
This is true.
Um, okay. Um, other commentary from the board or the public tonight, before we try to talk about scheduling another, another meeting and how far out that should be?
Uh, Rick, I had a few initial comments on the design, um.
Oh, please.
Buildings, uh, as viewed from Coolidge Street. So, um, you know, there's the clubhouse, the pool. You see the back of the, uh, covered parking, and then the surface parking. So.
Can you put that slide up? Just so we can see what Ron's talking about it.
Yep.
Keep going, Ron.
Okay, well, the clubhouse, you know, is designed, uh, you know, like, a, a, a re, single-family resident in the town. It seems to be appropriately scaled. Uh, right behind it, you have a pool.
The, the, I think you wanna see the, uh, three-D view from the street.
Okay. Yes, please. Oops.
Wait, the three-D view?
There's the pool, so my question is, is the pool screened from the street?
Yes, I mean, when I say yes, it's not a hundred percent screen, but there'll be vegetation, trees, and some coniferous, some deciduous.
Well, they're deciduous, they won't be, you know.
Well, we'll have some coniferous trees as well.
Well, it's just that, you know, as you drive around the town, you don't, people have pools, but you don't see them from the street.
I could pull up a, uh, the landscape plan if you wanna take a look at it.
Yeah. All I'm saying is, I'm making a comment that I think the pool should be visually screened from the street. The other comment I'd make is, on the covered parking, the back of the garage looks like a back of the garage, and it, you know, hopefully, as the design progresses, there'll be some more detail added to it, because it is, you know, it's the front of the, the complex. From the street.
I understand what you mean, and we can achieve some of that desired effect with landscaping.
We can definitely add some landscaping, uh, along the back of that garage, and.
Could you go to that next one, Todd?
You could, you could add a little ar- ar- architectural articulation also. You know, some trim boards or something, but right now, it's just plain vanilla.
I agree.
Go to the, the other one that chose to from.
And then the, the other, the other item, and this is the one I, I am most concerned about, is the proximity of the surface parking to Coolidge Street. It's right on the street.
And I. Talking about the, please go to it, this. Here, please go to this, this parking.
Yeah, it's right on the street. So, is there some way of, of reconfiguring that, so you could send it back somewhat, or?
We can take a look at that.
We can also do some more screening trees, you know, screen that.
Well, there's a little bit of a challenge of screening right there, just because that's in the ever-source easement. Um, the trees that we have here, uh, we try to put them, but ever-source will be the main, the, you know, they, they may come chopping down.
About the sightline and what that big heavy line was at the edge of the parking.
That was the retaining wall.
Retaining wall there.
Just pulled outside of the, uh, sightline view.
So, so I think.
A two or three feet above the current, uh, roadway right here.
Exactly, yeah, so, so to add on that, uh, when you're, when you're walking by the site in, in that particular area, you're gonna be, your eye is mostly gonna relate to, to the wall that's in front of you, not so much the parking above it. Uh, so, y- you know, depending on, on, on the finish of that wall, that, that, that's where I think your eye will be drawn to.
Well, okay, well, if you could present some views of that, and it's how do you plan to address it? I'd, I'd really like to see, uh, because, you know, just looking at the plan, it looks like you, you got a big parking lot is the closest element to the. Because, you know, just looking at the plan, it looks like you, you got a big parking lot is the closest element to the street.
Okay, so you want a view from the, looking up that way? All right. And we'll, we'll see if we can uh, remove a couple of spots there to pull that away from, from the street if that's a concern. There might be another place we can, can add them.
Todd, can I ask a follow-up question? And then Ron, I want to get back to your other design points, but um, from, from a real estate standpoint, EverSource has an easement over that area and you're, and, and the plan is you'll use parking underneath it on the theory that it doesn't interfere with their overhead wires. And therefore we're making a loud use of this observing estate.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't build any structures under it. We do have a trash area, but we believe that it's fine.
Okay, um, but making peace with them is up to you, but that's, that sounds like it's feasible.
Yes.
We've done that before.
Right. Okay. All right, Ron, go ahead. Sorry.
That was, that was the extent of my comments, just those, those four areas, the pool, the covered parking and the the uh, the surface parking being so adjacent to the street.
In our next meeting, we'll have some plans to show you, but I hope will alleviate some of those concerns.
Perfect. Okay, look forward to your solutions.
Thank you.
All right. Very helpful, very responsive. Um, other comments? 10 minutes to kickoff.
Well, uh, I'd like.
You know, we, we should schedule for a game every time.
If there's a, a minute free here, I'd like to make a comment.
Please go ahead, Marion.
Yeah, first of all, uh, thanks for being so responsive to the planning board's comments. You made several changes that we think are really positive. I look forward to seeing the new uh, bus stop, uh, the MWR TA bus stop that uh, could also use some of that main entrance to make a turnaround. I'm sure you'll figure that out. The school bus, I leave it up to the uh, to the people at the school to decide how they want uh, that done, but we just have to make sure it's safe. Uh, and uh, Ron's point about the, the back of that garage being a blank wall looking at the street. Uh, it is important to screen that, and that was one of our comments as well. I would say both with some architectural treatment of that wall plus plantings, because it's really quite a, a wall there.
There, there is one area we wanted to leave a little bit open, so if we potentially could have movie night out on the grass area and show a movie on the back of the garage and one of the areas, but that, that was my idea. I don't know.
Yeah, we can, we can still do some planting to mitigate those concerns and add some architectural detail to the back of that garage.
I have one last comment though. Um, it, and you also responded by uh, reminding us or telling us that there, there, there's bike parking by each.
Yeah, we're gonna be adding bikes, uh, racks in part of every building. We, we intended to do that and it just never made it on the plans, I guess.
Right, I figured that was the case. Uh, but related to the bikes, you know, it'd be great to have a bike there, but where can you go on your bike? Coolidge Street is suicidal to ride a bike on. And we've hoped for a long time to build a bike path along Coolidge Street, either adjacent, you know, as part of a slightly widened pavement, or even better yet, off the pavement. Uh, and uh, if there's any way that, it, it was part of the vision of Pulte, they agreed that they were going to do something like that. Uh, I should say Trask, uh, not Pulte, with the orig, original uh, uh, plan that now is, is history. Uh, but if there's any way you can see to contribute to that kind of a project, it would be a really a great thing for the residents to be able to get out on their bikes without getting killed on Coolidge Street.
I know there was a letter from Trask that we got a copy of, and I believe under his proposal, the town was going to design it, permit it, do all the takings if necessary. And I don't know if that's what the town is still thinking of doing.
I, yes, it would be, it would be up to the town to do all that work. The town would be looking for maybe a contribution uh, from the development, from you and Pulte, or you with Pulte, or?
That's something we can discuss and look into further.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um, Genie helped me out, but I'm not seeing other questions. Um, development team and Gino, what's a rational timeframe for getting back together in terms of being productive, in terms of you being able to do what you need to do with the development team and get the peer reviewers going? I mean, you can come back in here and every month and project, send the same materials to us again and again and again, but it probably is less fun with each iteration.
Um, I, I, I think one of the good things today was getting the peer review going, so they can look at our traffic reports, they can look at that. Um, a bunch of the information so far to give us comments. So I, I, I guess I'd let Gino answer when he thinks the peer review will be ready with some comments.
I think what might be helpful is the latter part of January, give us some time to get some of these things done.
Yeah, the, as far as the peer reviewer, um, they typically like to have at least two weeks to uh, to do their review, but I mean, we still have to get, get their uh, I'm getting the contract signed should be no, no issue. They, it's all just, we just need to sign their proposal. But um, um, yeah. I guess they could start with the, with the information that's already available, the traffic report and such. And yeah, I think the latter part of January probably makes some sense. You, you think you would have stormwater by then? Of course, they don't have to review everything at once, so they could concentrate on traffic and, and other issues now and then do stormwater next. Um, when you're, when that's ready.
Well, I think if we did the very last week of January, that buys us about almost six weeks, so.
But if they want to meet earlier and go over traffic and stuff like that, we can do that as well. But I would, whatever the board would like.
Board members, January 28th is a Thursday. I think if we have the problem of the Patriots playing that night, we'll all be happy as Patriots fans. But, but I'm not betting on it. Um, uh, how would that, how would that work for, for the other board members?
Yeah, I think the 28th is good.
Yes, that works for me. Thank you.
All right. Um, in that case, I'm gonna move that we uh, further continue the hearing to January 28th, 2021 at uh, 7:00 PM by Zoom. Uh, and that's my motion.
I second that motion.
Further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? None? If anybody wants to call for a roll call vote, we can certainly do that. That's, that's all right. It's always, it's always a reasonable ask.
No, just, Rick, the issue is that I, we're under the impression of my committee that because it's a Zoom meeting, you have to do a roll call vote by, you're required to do a roll call vote for every vote because it's Zoom. It, it's not an option. It's your, it's your, it's a legal requirement under this Zoom and emergency thing, process for doing meetings by Zoom. That's, that's the way we've been told.
Well, I, I've been told that, but, but it seems like a fine process. Let's do it by roll call. Rick Novak votes yes.
Ron Steffick votes yes.
Jonathan Fitch votes yes.
Any opposed? None. Okay. So we are, we are so extended. Uh, my Genie, check with, check with town council. We're supposed to do all these votes by um, by roll call. We'll do it that way.
Yeah, I'd like to know myself then.
Per, perfectly fair. Um, okay. Uh, until then, everybody, please stay safe. We're in a very difficult time and you, do what you have to do, but please everybody stay safe.
Thank you.
And go Patriots. Happy holidays to everybody.
Yes, thank you.